Here are none. Okay, next on the agenda is the Executive Committee. Whoever's got the floor.
Very informative. It was very respectful. Everybody behaved themselves, which is breath fresh air oftentimes. We covered some budgetary issues moving into FY 2026. We covered some issues that had to do with policies and procedures. This is the red line parts here?
Yeah, but it's all in old business.
Okay. This is easy. You already got to flip to the right page. And so there was a lot that we covered. With a lot of attorney issues, of course, everything that we do seems to involve attorneys and court systems. And so we had to make sure that our budget is consistent, not so much. In the past, we've practiced the deal where you, nothing really changes a whole lot from one year fiscal year to the next. I mean, there's minimal changes. Of course, you have that flexibility to move certain items earmarked to have to be if you got travel on and you can't take money just anywhere and move it into travel, sort of things like that. But we try to keep our professional fees, sort of things like that. So whenever we hire attorneys and other professionals, that we have the ability to not have to go back to the Congress and people like that to ask for money every time that we need money. We, so we try to be smart in how we budget our money and specific line items. And so we've done a lot of that yesterday, and it seemed to be very sufficient. It was very similar to what we've done the last two or three years, but yet there was still some, some issues in there, but we had to move some items around. And it was voted out of the committee for approval to come before the council as a whole, before it goes down to what other entities that have to favor it. A lot of times, we, most of the time, everything gets sent to the Bureau for their approval on the money that we're expending. And so we were very confident that what we prepared yesterday was going to be something that was going to be very workable. And I believe that, have great faith that the superintendent and the powers that be on that side will approve what we, what we've worked on. Was there anything else, Lisa, that we covered?
Bylaws and policies and procedures. On the bylaws, I just set it up to act how we actually do the meetings. I changed things around. I changed the standing committees to the ones that you had and combined. That was about all I changed on that. It was in there about the abstain votes. The pass, when there's abstain votes, it still needs a majority of the members present, whether it was an abstination or not, if the member's present. That was added to that.
Yes, we complemented also the operational events of the actual meeting itself. We condensed it down. The new business, you go around 15 minutes and call to the chair. Old business was 15 to five, call to the chair for the question.
And that-
It's not mandatory, but it's a procedure guideline.
And that was already in there, along with the talking for debate? It is two minutes per council member, preferably only one, at your discretion. And then that was already in there. We did not change that.
That's right.
There was, there were certain issues that have come up over the, since I've been in tenure here, and that, including myself, members, members tend to get a little long-winded in some of their debate. And a lot of back and forth, and then you cover something and you move on, and then people want to move backwards. And that's just, it just, it makes things more difficult to try to get to where we need to be, making a final decision and moving forward. A lot of that with whether it's Roberts rules or whatever policies and that have been covered in previous councils in the past, there was, we didn't add really anything. We just, there was things that were already in there in place that the previous councils had voted on and approved. And so it made it pretty easy. But oftentimes, because the policy's in place, doesn't often equate to us following them to the letter out here. So we're trying, we made sure that we had some areas redlined where we're going to adhere to those things a lot more strictly than what's been handled in the past. And we firmly believe that things will be, be more efficient in how we move forward. And that's just, it's, again, it gives us more time to talk about important issues. Not that, all the, all issues aren't important, but we tend to kind of squander our time on certain things procedurally, where if we followed the procedure the way it was intended, and the way it was written, and the way it was approved, we'd get through things and we'd have a lot more quality of content as far as our productivity as we, as we, you know, throughout our meetings. And so, was there anything else on that, Lisa?
Um, not that I can think of. I'll have to ask Adam.
Councilman Reevar, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. And thank you for the work the committee has done, I guess, on their very first meeting. I just wanted to remind everybody that the current bylaws and policies and procedures were last approved and adopted on July the 18th of 2018 by Osage Minerals Council Four in their second month in office. And it's, these are, as, as, as we all know, extremely important documents that govern what we do, or set rules, guidelines, and procedures for what we do as a council, and how we conduct ourselves. And it's so, you know, it's a, an extremely important two, two documents. And I saw today, an hour before the meeting, that our staff posted this work onto our Boardable platform. And I downloaded it. Of course, I haven't had a chance to, to open it up yet, because the meeting, you know, started within minutes. And so I, I am all in favor, 100% in favor of, of updating, revising both of these instruments. I think it's just extremely important. I think it should involve all eight council members' input. And I look forward to going over line by line, item by item, on both documents, all eight of us together, maybe carve out, you know, a day each month or something to work on this together, because it's really important instruments, and we all should have input. And in a lot of consideration, and maybe even some matters that might need to go before legal counsel for clarity. So I just want to commend the, this new, this new committee, the Executive Committee, for their work, and look forward to working with them in the future to eventually come up with a, a suitable set of revisions for us on both these documents. So I just wanted to say that, and I appreciate your work. Thank you, Chairman.
Councilwoman Irwin, then Councilman Shackleford.
I like to reiterate again, the rules of engagement when we're talking in here, that we all be allowed two minutes. So if somebody says, your two minutes are up, they don't continue, or they just say, thank you. You know, we just need to make sure we follow our very own rules on that. And that's why I call it rules of engagement, because sometimes people just go forever. And they reiterate themselves time and time and time again. Thank you.
Councilman Shackleford.
Real quickly, again, these committees are designed to do some of the heavy lifting, but, but there's never any final vote or anything. It's, it's merely passing out a committee with recommendation. And it goes before the councils as a whole at that point. Whenever it's brought onto the floor, questions are called for, there's discussion at that time. If there's any edits or any, anything that needs addressed at that time, if you hadn't had an opportunity to be in the meeting, you can, you can make those changes and those recommendations at that point. And, and one last correction, once we got through at the meeting yesterday, it wasn't an hour before today. It was probably an hour after we finished our meeting yesterday, whenever it was posted. Thank you.
Any other questions on the Executive Committee? Here are none. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Councilman Shackleford, Councilman Waller.
Yesterday, go ahead, Ms. Irwin.
No, 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 I'm, I'm-
Okay, like I said earlier in my report, that we had an opportunity to go over the budget, and we had some recommend, we had some edits that we had to make in there, and some changes we had made, and, and they were properly vetted, and it would come out there with the do-pass recommendation. So at this point in time, I'd like to be able to bring these out for the council as a whole here for do-pass recommendation. Thank you. I'll make that form of motion.
Motion on the floor, need a second. Second by Councilman Big Horse. Any discussion on this? Here are none. Call for the vote.
Chairman, I have my hand up.
Go ahead, Councilman Reevar.
Oh, thank you so much. I don't have a clue what you all are voting on. Whoever spoke before you, before now, whoever just got finished speaking, I didn't understand one single word that individual said. And if you're talking about the budget, because I did hear the word budget at the very beginning, whoever started speaking. And that was another instrument that we got one hour before a meeting started, or that I saw one hour before the meeting started. I'd last checked Boardable right before, right, you know, right after lunch yesterday, and nothing had been posted to Boardable yet. And I looked at it first thing this morning, and, and an hour before a meeting, and thought that, that all these 13 documents were down, were, were put on Boardable sometime late afternoon or, or last night. And I've not had a chance to download them until this morning, and I hadn't even got to look at them. So if we're, if we're going to talk about the budget, we need to, we, we need to go through it line by line. And I'd like to be able to compare it to the last quarter and the quarter before, I mean, the last year and the year before, kind of, we see a pattern. That's what we used to do in Osage Minerals Council Four. And I'm not so sure that this Council Five has ever approved a single budget yet since we've been in office. I, I searched our resolutions for the word budget, and I didn't come across one where we've, we've approved a budget yet. And so if we're going to talk about approving a budget now, I sure would like to have time, and I think it'd be responsible, for us to spend a little time to review it, discuss it among ourselves, and, and then maybe sometime in the future, soon, that we could maybe have a vote to approve it or not approve it. Thank you, Chairman.
Can you repeat, can you repeat the motion, Councilman Shackleford?
Comment real quick, please, after the motion. To approve the changes in the budget for FY 26 that we made yesterday in the committee, a two-hour meeting yesterday where a lot of what was discussed, and there have been approvals in budgets over the past three years that I'm aware of, that have been handled by our staff, and certain, and the chairman that was there. So again, for discussion purposes here, and following the rule of two minutes, five minutes, whatever it happens to be, if Mr. Reevar wants to make a, an edit to the motion asking for us to be able to set this back, table it until he has a chance to look at these documents in order to make a better informed vote, that's his choice to do that. But at the time, we're, the people that were in the meeting yesterday, were looking for a movement to pass it, but we're not, you know, against anything, if any member is unsure about what they're voting for, because they haven't had a chance to review the documents. I'm not against that. But of course, the Congress is in session at this time, and time is of the essence, because they have about 200 budgets, I believe, that they're going through. So I'll leave that to the, to the members of this committee on whether or not they want to postpone this vote in order for certain members to, to review what the changes that we made and approved and voted on yesterday. Thank you.
Any, any discussion on what the, what was said? There's a motion on the floor. Here are none. Call for the vote.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reevar?
What are you all voting on? I haven't, I haven't heard a single call for a vote or for, for any, I haven't heard any motion for a vote. What, what are you all voting on?
Fiscal year 26 budgets, as recommended by committee, and modifications.
Well, we haven't got, we haven't got to see and review the budget until just now. And, and I think, like I said earlier, I think that we should, you know, have a serious discussion about it, and, and be really responsible about such an important matter. So if you're talking, if, if what you all are doing right now, is somebody may have made a motion and maybe somebody seconded it. I didn't know, I did not hear either one of those, that that happened. But if that's what you're doing, my vote is, is no. Thank you.
Councilman Shackleford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes, for my fourth time of sending budgets through in this seat and that seat. Thank you.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. We'll move on. That concludes the budget. Councilman Waller. A motion on the floor. Need a second. Bylaws need a second. Second by Councilman Shackleford. Any discussion on the bylaws? Here are none. Call for the vote.
Councilman Reevar?
Well, I couldn't understand what you all were saying, but if you're talking about the bylaws and the policies and procedures, like I said earlier, I think we should, they're so serious, I think we should have some meetings and discuss these matters among ourselves, and come up with a document that we all approve. So if you're, if you're, if, if you are making a motion and seconding a motion to approve those two documents, my answer is no.
Councilman Shackleford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. I see you on the old business, Production and Information Committee. We met last Monday, and Bill Lynn's here to update us on what went, what went on, and what maybe some resolutions need to be passed. The first one is on the drought relief grant, and the second one's on the technical assistance grant. And there's some payments that need to be approved on the, Bill will explain all that. You got the floor, Bill?
Chairman, Council, thank you. This, we met on, on Tuesday in Information and Production. So we've kind of thrown it, thrown the grants. We were starting those at 2:00, and then rolling right into the Information and Production Committee. So we've just kind of rolled that into one. And if we get done within an hour, or 30 minutes, whatever, then, then this is what's coming out of here. So the resolutions in front of you is to pay the, the ARC GIS renewal, and the NOIP renewal at the same time. And so these are for the website, our data repository, which is the osageminerals.org. So the ARC GIS, that's the GIS mapping, and, and that's a renewal that's, I think it's just under $500 a year right now. And so to keep our data up and running. And then the, the NOIP, that's, that's more of like a data warehouse. So that's the platform, and that's the domain, and, and where all that information is stored. And so I believe that's only $30. But when we went through it, I, when we, we need more, more space on our website, that cost is going to go up. And I'm pretty sure it's going to go up now. And all we're going off of is a quote that they send us, NOIP and RGIS. And so we asked for invoices, and they said, no, they, they don't work in invoices. So they asked us just to go ahead and pay off the quotes. And so to pay off the quotes instead of the invoices. So it's $500 for the ARC GIS renewal, which that's that spatial data, all the maps that are on our, our website, all the well spots, all the electric, everything that's on there is, is what you're paying for with both these. Now, the NOIP, that's N-O dash IP is the name of the company. They're the ones that are like the, the warehouse that's storing that data. And they also have that domain, that name, osageminerals.org, protected for us.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the first motion that needs to be approved in the, one of the, one of the grants. And it says, "Osage Mineral Council hereby proposes to lead the technical assistance grant for, for $2 million to repair, remediate, and replace water wells on the three villages and Osage Reservation through the, through a Bureau of Reclamation's Emergency Drought Relief for Tribal Program R25AS00275 Grant. To do this, the OMC will work with the Osage Nation Grant Department. Bill Lynn is a grant, is a grant point of, point of contact." That's a motion. Councilman Waller? Yes, I'm making a motion. Second by Councilman Waller. Any discussion on this? Here are none. Here are none. Call for the vote.
Councilman Shackleford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reevar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. And second grant is the Osage Mineral Council, here's a form of a motion. "The Osage Mineral Council hereby proposes to lead, to lead the technical assistance grant for $1 million to do a comprehensive water study on the Osage Reservation through the R25AS00293 Native American Affairs Technical Assistance to Tribes FY 2025 Grant. To do this, OMC will work with the Osage Nation Grant Department. Bill Lynn is a grant's point of contact." Second by Councilman Waller. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reevar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackleford?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. These are good, and good things that is going to help our people, help especially with the water situation and the water wells on our old reservation. I know some of us live in the camps. There's, there's one right by my house, to tell you the truth. Okay, the next motion is, "The Osage Mineral Council agrees to pay for ESI Incorporated and, and NO dash IP from the S510 account." That's the form of motion. Second by Councilman Waller. Any discussion? Here are none. Call for the vote.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reevar? Councilman Shackleford?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. Next on the, no business is meeting minutes. Need to entertain a motion. Excuse me. We're not ready? Okay. Minutes are not ready today, so will we, we'll go on with the vote for the chairman and then second chairman. Is that correct?
Yeah.
First, we'll do the, we'll do, we'll do the chairman first. Is that correct?
Well, that's my point of order, Chairman.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Councilman Waller.
You have a place here where we're, we'll do the chairman, then we'll ask the question on the second chair. We did no nominations.
We did no nominations, right.
Call of the chair. Thank you.
Everybody vote, and then hand it back in to Lisa.
Councilman Reevar, if you want to text me with your vote for chairman?
Okay, so, yeah, so what is, I couldn't understand what you're doing. Are we going to somebody-
We're voting for, we're voting for chairman, for the Osage, new chairman of the Osage Mineral Council.
Lacy, could you speak in the microphone?
We're voting for, voting for chairman, Councilman Reevar.
And then tell me what was, is being said?
Calling your voting-
Yeah.
Chair. He can text if you want.
Yeah, put it across there.
Yeah.
I don't know what you're doing.
It's for Myron or me.
Please explain to me what we're doing.
They're voting for chairman between Stephanie, or Councilwoman Irwin and Chairman Red Eagle. You may send a text to Lacy or myself.
Okay, I couldn't understand what you said. Something about, about, about Councilwoman Irwin and Councilwoman, or Councilman Red Eagle. About what?
They are both nominated for chairman. They are voting on this.
For chairman. So, so are you asking each one of us which one of the two?
They did-
Yes.
Extend your pick.
They did a ballot, but you may text in yours to Lacy.
Say that again, slowly?
Text, text your vote to Lacy.
Wait, is Lacy there? Can I speak to, can Lacy talk into the microphone? I can understand. I just can't understand what, what's being said. Are, are we going to select one?
Yes, yes.
Is each council, is each council member supposed to state who they want to be the chairman?
They did it by ballot. So if you just text me your vote, or you can say it out loud if you want. But it was Red Eagle and Irwin.
So, so the, so you're, we were voting on the chairman. The two that we have to select from is, is the current chairperson, Red Eagle, and the other nominee would be Councilwoman Irwin? Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
My vote is for the current chairman, Myron Red Eagle. Thank you.
It's Councilwoman Irwin. Councilwoman Irwin won the vote. Thank you.
Okay, nominations for second chair are, are, are open right now. Nomination for second chair. Everett Waller? Any other nominations? I nominate Joseph Tishawala. Any other nominations? Nomination to be, to be ceased. Okay. Okay, everybody vote.
Councilman- Councilman Reevar?
I, I don't know what you're talking about. I haven't, I can't understand what you're saying. What, what is the question?
Second chair nominees are Councilman Waller and Second Chair Tishawala.
For, for the second chair?
Yes.
I, I'd like to vote for the second, the second chair, I'd like to vote for Councilman Joe Tishawala. Thank you.
Now we need a resolution to accept these.
Thank you, counsel. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, we need a motion, a resolution to accept the chair.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the chair and second chair. Motion on the floor, Councilman Waller, second by, second Chair Tishawala, any, any Any discussion from the council? I've got a shareholder that wants to speak, go ahead, Melissa.
Okay. Well, Councilwoman Red Eagle, Assistant Tishawala, council members and staff, I'm sitting back here and I'm just listening to everything and I always do, whether it be online or whatever, but I just want to ask questions about when do I get to speak about what you guys are doing for me? You go through these policies and procedures, these budgets and everything, having not worked on these, with these bylaws, have not followed them all year long, I was actually, you know, wondering when those, those committees were established and I've asked everyone about those and I think I was even ridiculed in here once because do we have any, do we have any committee reports? There was a laughter. I find that very disrespectful and I, and I just want to know, when can we as shareholders speak to you about what you voted on today, what policies and procedures you came up with? Because I look at those, we all look at those and I just want to know, when do we get that, like right now, should I say? I want to look at those before you vote, I want to look at that budget, I've asked for a budget before, never had one, never got one. I just want to know, when do we as shareholders get to speak to you to see what you guys are voting on? Do we have to wait until those are drawn up or how, how, how does that go? How does this work for you representing me? And I know, you know, they're probably out there or whatever, but I just want to, and that's just my, my, my comment.
Councilman Waller?
I just want to address this time. Thank you for the comment. I am actually going to have to speak to the existing GAS, that current commission, I'll make sure it's on, if the budget's on there, policies and procedures. We actually commented what the changes were, so once those are adopted in, I'll make sure they're put on there because that's the easiest way for us to get to that and I have fifty four thousand emails. Okay, so you've got to understand that.
Oh, I do understand.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just want to know when it was our turn to speak to you.
It's always your turn. Just, just got to be here and do that. Because if I may finish, I can't tell you how hard these people work. This is my fifth council set. I sit with your grandpa, I sit with his father, your father, these parents. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Chairman, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Councilman Reevar.
Yeah, thank you again, Chairman. I really appreciate the opportunity, helping me work through this audio difficulty. My comment is to our staff, I just ask that please, before the next meeting, could we, could we contract somebody that knows something about audio to come in and research what our issues are and why we cannot in this year of twenty twenty five, with today's technology, we can't conduct a Zoom meeting without so much trouble? So if we could, please, I, I'm requesting that we please address this, this significant audio problem that we have, maybe before our next meeting, that would be awesome. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman.
I think one of the biggest problems we got is we're not speaking into our microphone and not directly. Can you hear me now, Councilman Reevar? Can you, can you understand what I'm saying?
What? I couldn't hear what you're saying. I mean, I heard you, but I don't know.
Can, can you hear what I'm saying now?
I heard now and I said, can you hear me?
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we'll, the new chairman and the new chair, vice chairman will look into it and we'll see what can be done.
Okay, thank you, Chairman.
Need a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Call for the vote.
Second Chair Tishawala?
To accept. Yes, yes, yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Red Cor, oh. Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reevar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackleford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, counsel.
Second.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you, shareholders.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Council Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reevar? Oh, okay. Councilman Shackleford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala?